All right, we are reconvened for the work session on non-resident student tuition rates. Dr. Ridgell.
Good morning, Board members.
Good morning.
Thank you for the opportunity to bring forward and discuss with you today the non-resident student tuition. Currently, for this school year, we have twenty students enrolled who are not residents of St. Mary's County. Five of those twenty students pay tuition. Fifteen of those are students of staff members. And recall, the students of staff members under J E C A R, their tuition is waived. Last year, in one of the state meetings, I had the opportunity to be part of a discussion in terms of non-resident student tuition. And in that, I learned that many of the school systems in Maryland charged more than the numbers we had been receiving from the state. Each year MSD would send us a number and say, "This is the amount that we would use for non-resident tuition for students." But what I didn't realize is that the Board could exceed that amount if they decided and wanted to. So I went in and checked in our policies in J E C dash R in the regulation and J E C A R does allow you, as the Board of Education, to establish annually a tuition rate upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools. That rate then is prorated for the one hundred and eighty days of school. So if a student is not enrolled all one eighty, then we prorate it. Half-day programs like pre-K are charged one-half the rate. Parents who are non-residents then complete the normal transfer papers, the normal agreement in respect to academics, attendance, and tuition, academics, attendance, and behavior, and they also complete an additional contract for tuition. That tuition then is paid quarterly to fiscal services, and of course, it is waived for staff members. So it is the five students who are currently paying tuition for this school year. These are the current non-resident tuition rates. These are the rates that have been sent to us from MSD. So a regular education student, five thousand three hundred and twenty-three dollars. A special education student then is three hundred percent of the regular education student for fifteen thousand nine hundred and sixty-nine dollars. And these are the tuition rates that we have normally been following. And these are the tuition rates that those five students, their parents, have signed for the contracts for this year. But in working through this, we looked at that really, that amount is not reflecting what it costs the school system to be able to educate that child. So we propose and bring forward to you today for your consideration these not different non-resident tuition rates. These are actually based on the per pupil calculation. These, again, waivers still in place for staff members. Special education would be charged the higher rate, three hundred percent of regular ed. And they would go into effect for any future students that we would get beyond the five that we currently have. These numbers come in working with Mrs. McCourt in terms of when looking at the state revenue, county revenue, local revenue, and then the federal, and taking the total amount of revenue, dividing it by the number of students, sixteen thousand nine hundred and fifty-seven, that we had for the official enrollment on September thirtieth of two hundred and fourteen, and finding then that that would calculate out if they were out of state at eleven thousand six hundred and sixty-one dollars. If they were in state, then it would be the county and local divided by the number of students, and that would be five thousand eight hundred and twenty-five dollars. So this five thousand eight hundred and twenty-five dollars is, of course, about five hundred dollars more than we are currently charging. So I bring this forward so we can have a discussion today to determine interest in terms of the possibilities of raising the non-resident student tuition rates. And then I could bring this back to you if in agreement and in interest in it, I could bring it back at a future board meeting for action.
Thank you. Ms. Lee?
I was just wondering about the five students who are not having their education because of a staff member. What prompts them to have their education here in St. Mary's County? Is it, are they like foreign exchange students or?
They are not foreign exchange students.
Is that like a different kind of thing?
That's all different programs.
Okay.
That's all different programs. The current five students that we have, many of them, most of them live in Charles County. So they live close to the St. Mary's-Charles boundary line. In some cases, those students attended St. Mary's County Public Schools at some point, wanted to stay here and continue their education, but they moved across the county line, which would put them in, say, Charles County. Sometimes students are here because they have, they're living with another relative, and therefore, the parents are not residents of St. Mary's County, which makes them subject to non-resident tuition rates.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Crosby?
This is something I need to think about a long time, I think. Because five hundred dollars doesn't sound like much, but it is. But, and again, it should go that way around the whole country, when you think about it. Unless there's some kind of special need or something. I'm not talking about special ed right now. It's just got to be fair to everybody, that's all I'm thinking about.
Well, and these proposed numbers are the actuals. It's not anything additional than what we're paying to educate the student. It is the actual cost of educating the student. And if it's a out-of-county, then of course, we would still get the state appropriation for the student.
Oh, okay, okay.
And out of state, then Mrs. McCourt figured that out.
Right. Okay, so we'd still get their, do, well, whether we end up being short or not depends on, we could end up short, couldn't we, Mrs. McCourt, or not, with a student?
Short, how, Mrs. Crosby?
And money. In other words, it wouldn't necessarily come out equal with one student and another student.
Well, currently, we are, we are spending five hundred dollars more, give or take, than we are currently receiving.
Okay, I got it, from the state.
County.
No, the total.
For the, for the total of the out-of-county.
Now, if it was the other way around, if we were getting an extra five hundred dollars, we wouldn't, we'd want to keep it like that, I'm sure. I just want to hear the other individuals and see what they have to say about. How long has it been like this, do you know?
Been like what, I guess?
It's been a while. It's been at least the six years that I've been in student service.
That's what I meant, Kathy, how long this has been in effect.
I, haven't we always charged tuition for certain out-of-county students? So where my recollection is, I don't recall this ever having been brought before the Board for our input before.
That would be correct, Mrs. Allen. And we have been charging, we have been charging the state amount.
Yeah, we want to charge a bulk.
The proposal now is to charge the actual.
Yes.
That's why I think it's here.
Right.
Okay. All right, Mrs. Crosby, do you have anything else?
No, that's fine, thank you.
Mrs. Hoover?
Okay, now, I know last week I sent Mr. Smith a email with questions. I wanted to know what the average cost per student to educate in our county.
For a general ed student?
For a general ed.
The average cost per student, counting in terms of per pupil allocation, would be the eleven thousand six hundred and sixty-one dollars.
That is the, that is the PPA amount that, and really, the way we get to that calculation is if, if you go back two slides to the, or I'm sorry, right on that slide, sorry. On the top, the, the total, full-time equivalent students that the state recognizes. Now, that is prorated for the kids that attend partial day. That doesn't include students who are in certain pre-K programs and Head Start. But for the total, almost seventeen thousand students that are recognized at the, at the state level, MSD level, divided by the two hundred million dollars that we have operating gets us to the eleven thousand six hundred and sixty-one dollars that is the per pupil allocation.
Okay.
And, I mean, you had asked specifically for the breakout, and we're trying to calculate that for different students, but we don't, we don't actually, like, keep a track of, you know, how much each student costs. We just take the overall number of students we have and divide it into the overall appropriation.
Right, well, I didn't know, like, what this student costs this and this student costs that, but I just wanted for the average cost per student, the average cost per special ed, you know, just, and I know some, you know, might be twenty thousand and one, five, but, I mean, I just said the average, you know, how much?
And I, perhaps Mrs. McCourt, I mean, that's what we're trying to reconcile.
Yeah, we don't actually track that per student, because certainly, all the students are utilizing many of the services throughout the school district, including fiscal services, for example. And so I would actually have to break out a component of the administrative costs associated with particular students. Now, certainly, the special education students, depending on their placement, whether in county or out of county, can range from anywhere from, let's say, twenty thousand dollars to a hundred thousand dollars, depending on what their placement is.
But as far as?
Okay, well, I was looking at the cost here. So not the ones, the students that are going out of county. I'm talking about the students here, because you have a fee that you're stating for the special ed student, it's going to cost, this is how much it's going to cost. But if we're only charging, you know, like, you want to bring up to, like, even six thousand dollars, but the cost for us to educate here is eleven thousand six hundred and sixty-one, then why is the charge only six thousand?
Well, we still receive the state portion of that funding, so.
I, I know, but I'm saying that if this is what it costs for the county, the school system, to educate, I know what MSD is saying, well, this is how much, you know, we're giving in the funds, but I want to, I want to know, this is per pupil, is eleven thousand six hundred and sixty-one.
Right, but I think the difference between, correct me if I'm wrong, between the fifty-eight-hundred that they want to charge and the eleven thousand is the state.
The state still gives us that money.
We, we still get the money from the state, because they are still a resident of the state of Maryland. So this is, and.
It's the county's portion.
Right, I'm going to say, I'm going to use the word county portion, but that's like, so this is what the county is kicking in for the education of the student. We still get the money from the state for that student, regardless of whether they are a county resident or not, because they are a state resident. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does. And then, the other thing too, is we are, you know, you know, the discussion of, you know, we're having to use portables, the, you know, the, having, you know, asking for more staff, more teachers, and yet, we're allowing students that are not in this county that are not, you know, you know, the parents are not paying these taxpayer dollars or relatives or whoever, but, you know, they're still coming here. And also, the fifteen students or the staff members that we are paying as taxpayers, I mean, I'm, I'm, you know, a taxpayer as well as the people that I represent, and I did go out and just, you know, ask people, am I, you know, far off on thinking that, you know, I don't want to be paying for a student from another county. I would, I want to pay for the students that are here in our county. And, you know, when I just, I asked people, I said, "Did you know that students are coming here for free from other counties?" And no, they did not know, and they were not happy, because their tax dollars are going to educate a student from another county. They want it here for the students from our county. And I know you might only say that it's only twenty students. Last year, we only had, because I asked for the list from last year, before, twenty-four students, eighteen were free. And I think that we need to be looking and worrying about our students and not, you know, having staff members, because we're being cordial, or whatever you want to say, to have other, you know, to staff members to bring in their, their student. The other thing that I, you know, was looking at is if a staff member gets to pick a school, basically, that's what they're doing, but yet, someone here in the county does not have that same privilege, just let me just go pick another school. They have to go through a thing, you know, the waiver and all this, and some are denied. So I do believe there's double standards there when we're deciding on, especially a staff member bringing in their child, and they're picking a school.
When a staff member expresses interest in terms of bringing their own child to St. Mary's County Public Schools, they fill out the same form and go through the same process that a resident student, parents go through to request a different school. They fill out the, the general form, they fill out the agreement in respect to the academics, attendance, and discipline. And they submit it and ask for approval.
And who, and who approves? Because I was told before that the principal has a discretion.
I do the final approval. The form goes to the principal first to determine if there is space in the school. So just as a resident student, in order to transfer schools, has to have space at the school and in the grade, both the school and the grade they are requesting, so does a non-resident student. So we check the enrollment at the school, we check the enrollment in the grade. That's what the principals sign off on. They then send the form to me to determine if it meets the criteria for a transfer. The only times that students are denied their transfer would be if there is not space in act, well, it's really the grade. If the student has had a contract before, transferred the year before, and violated that particular contract in respect to the academics, the attendance, and the discipline. But as long as they meet the criteria, or it doesn't meet the criteria that is established in policy and regs.
Okay, so as I saw, the, the policy, you know, is very general or broad, but yet, I see the regulation, which is falls under Mr. Smith and, and, you know, you developed the regulation, that I believe that really, you know, first, I don't think anybody from outside the county should be coming here. But if it came back that the Board, because we were elected, we are representing the taxpayers in the community, that we have final approval then, if, you know, if it had to come down to somebody coming here, because you, we are using taxpayer money to educate these students. And I think the taxpayers should have a say, which we are representing, in if these students come here. Like I said, I don't believe that they should, and, but I'm also going with, when I went out and I asked people, they also were, what do you mean, that especially the students that are coming for free? You know, why is my tax dollars going to educate a student that does not live here? How many other counties, and you've even said this, that they, that they charge, or they charge more? How many other counties provide that same courtesy to, you know, someone from our county to get to go for free, to go over to Calvert-Chris, Anna Rundle?
In terms of staff members, children? Charles County has, if they were hired prior, if the staff member was hired prior to January of two thousand and thirteen, the tuition is waived, just like us. If they were hired after January two thousand and thirteen, they are charging one-half of the cost of the tuition. If, in the case of Calvert County, the staff's tuition, the staff members pay thirty-five percent of the tuition.
Okay, and what about Anna Rundle?
I didn't check.
So that goes up there, and.
But the state still pays too.
The state still pays for all of the Maryland residents, even though they live out of county, yes.
So that has to be in consideration too, that the state is kicking in some money. It's not like they're coming without anybody else. The state is also putting in some money. That's what it sounds like to me.
But there's also that other fee on top of it that they're, that we are putting the bill. And, and I don't need to know rate, you know, how many, I also wanted to know, like, about the STEM, GIS, the finance academy, kind of that as a.
Their lead.
As a, you know, an average cost, but, you know, how many?
Those students are just, they, they don't have additional services because they are in those academies.
It's not an additional cost for those?
I mean, the only, what we could break out for that would be transportation costs for, like, the hub buses that carry kids to schools.
Right, I don't want to leave anyone with the impression that if a child is in STEM or GIS, or they're, they're receiving more services or more dollars, services than anyone else.
Okay.
Because that, that is, that is not the case.
And the enrollment in those classes, the class sizes are at or above the level of other classes, and, I mean, we'd be required to teach them regardless.
Right.
When we originally set up STEM, there was larger allocations of MOI money to put together the, the science classrooms and the extra things, and there still is a, there's still a line for additional materials of instruction money for all the academies. But that's a, I mean, that's a nominal amount.
Well, and the fact is, the dollar doesn't necessarily follow the child. It costs less to educate an elementary school student than it does a middle or a high school student. And that just is a function of the way the classes break out and the materials that are needed. So I'm not sure that breaking those costs out to show, even if you could, what a GIS student costs, or what, or what a welding student costs, or whatever, is, is a true reflection.
Yeah, I was just, I was just trying to get an average, okay? So, but my whole point being is if there is a student from out of the county that, you know, like, say, may, say, might be instead of eleven thousand six hundred and sixty-one, because of transportation, it might be eleven thousand seven hundred and fifty. Okay, that was kind of my point. So then, why is this fee not being charged? And why is, and I know, you know, it's, oh, because we're getting money from the state, but we, as a county, are still kicking in money to educate these students. How do I, how do we know that maybe one of the students that came in, even for free, is not receiving speech and language, and now because, or maybe five of them, and now we've had to hire another contract speech and language person? I know everybody, you know.
Okay, all right, all right, so we, we have a couple of different issues going on here. So the, the, we have a policy and a regulation that outlines the tuition for in-county or in-state and out-of-county students. And then the regulation is what is allowing the staff students their tuition to be waived.
Not just, I just, yeah.
All right, just let me summarize, okay? So that, so that is one aspect. What we are looking at here is simply the dollar amount that Dr. Ridgell is asking us to approve at a later date for the tuition rates for the fifteen, sixteen school year, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so, so we have to, at this point, we have to separate the two, because we have, if, it sounds like you have a policy and a regulation issue versus the issue.
Well, I have the, I have the, I have a policy, well, not really a policy issue, but a regulation issue, because I feel like it was, the liberty was taken to make this regulation by the, and I'm going to say the prior superintendent, because it's been there for a while. And I also have an issue with the fee, because the fee isn't enough, and.
But the fee is, the fee is covering the county portion. The fee is a hundred, correct me if I'm wrong, the, the tuition that we are charging, forget about the staff students right now, the five students that are paying tuition, these tuition rates will one hundred percent cover what the per pupil allocation rate is for a student in St. Mary's County.
What we would get for them if they lived in county.
Right.
We're not missing any dollars.
So if, if John Smith comes here from Charles County and he pays tuition, he is going to pay five thousand, we, well, Dr. Ridgell's proposing that he pays five thousand eight hundred and twenty-five dollars, right? The difference between the five thousand eight hundred and twenty-five dollars that he is paying and the amount of money that a, that a in-county student is receiving per TMI's calculation is the state portion. We still get the state portion. So whatever the difference is, you know, six thousand or fifty, three hundred dollars or whatever it is, we still get that state piece, because they are still a Maryland state resident. We just don't get the county piece. So we get this, we get the state piece from John Smith, John Smith's parents or whoever kicks in what would be the county piece, so he's whole.
He's fully funded.
Right.
And if they're, if they are a special education student, or they do have an active IEP, then the cost per, what is aligned at Maryland, at the MSD, it's three hundred percent. So if you live out of county and you have a special education student that you wish to enroll in St. Mary's County Public Schools, it is, the cost to you is, what we're proposing is three times the PPA, which would be seventeen thousand four hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Right.
So the, what, what we were bringing forward originally for action, but it's now been moved to work group, and it's good, because obviously, we need to really discuss this, what we're bringing forward is just simply taking a look at what has been a past practice from the his, I have never, we had, before Dr. Ridgell came back and went, you know, we really should be charging the actual PPA, and that was the first time we actually went into it. That's, that's what we're seeking ultimately, we'd like to bring back for action, which just says that whatever the actual cost is for the county to educate a child, that is what we will actually charge somebody from out of the county. That's, that's one thing. That's the policy, and that's the policy that you, the Board, own. The regulation attendant to it, which the superintendent and staff owns, is that we do not charge teachers and staff their portion of the tuition. That's a, that's a totally different discussion. I would defer to the Board and the conversation you would like to have and the direction you would like to provide to me to recraft, or to reconsider, or to rethink that, that particular portion. It is giving a benefit to that staff member of five thousand eight hundred and twenty-five dollars, because we are educating their child, and we are foregoing the county portion of funding. So for the fifteen students that we have enrolled this year, who are children of staff members, if you take that calculation of the, of our per pupil, five thousand eight hundred and twenty-five, you know, we're looking at, I think it's like eighty, you know, it's like eighty thousand dollars of money that we would have received if the children lived in county.
But you know what? We're missing a critical piece here. Staff members work over and beyond. We've had presentations here, how we need more employees, employees are doing two and three jobs, they come in early, they work late. It is added value to have these people here and their children in the school that they work in. It is added value to have these people here and their children in the school that they work in. They stay later. When you talk about a teacher, they come in early, they stay late. They don't have to worry about daycare, leaving school immediately to go pick up their children from daycare or worry about them. I have seen personally where teachers' children, their children go to the same school. They come to their parents' class. When the school day is over, the teacher is still working in the classroom and want to work because the children are with the parent. The parent know the children are safe. And I think this is an incentive. I think this is a benefit. I think this is a professional courtesy that we should allow for our staff members. We need to get quality employees that way and the students are not attending for free. We're getting the state portion because this, um, we get the state portion and the parents are paying the county portions. And I support our staff members' children attending the school because they work here. It provides added value. It improves student morale, teacher morale. It is a recruitment tool. It helps us with retention and recruitment of quality staff. That's what we want. That's what Mr. Smith talked about. And you're only talking about fifteen students out of eighteen thousand students. I think it'd be a, a disrespect. It'd be just, I just can't, I, I, I just cannot see this, to do this to our staff members. They're dedicated people. I have seen them. I have seen teachers leave in the dark. I have seen, cause I have to drive by school to leave my neighborhood. I see them come in the dark. I see them leave home in the dark. I see them with carts with rolls on them, rollers, taking work home, even if they're leaving at night. And I support our staff and I do not support us not allowing them to let their children go to school here for free if they live in another county. Because there are people in this county who are working in other counties and they have agreement with those counties too.
Yeah, but that's third county's issue, not, not ours.
We're not losing money. We're getting added value.
I am sorry, it's, I'm not disrespecting the teachers. I, you know, I can't do this in my job. And you know, this is, you know, added benefit, um, yes. But have the taxpayers had a say in this added benefit? Um, you know.
For fifteen students?
Well, I, it could be for one student. If for one student, for the convenience is not right. It is not right. Um, other people are in their jobs, do not have the same luxury.
Okay, here, 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 here's my, here's my comment on this. All right, to Mary's point, this is point one percent and that is rounding.
It's eight, yeah, eight, ten thousandths of a percent.
Right, of our student population, okay? I came out of the, out of the private sector, right? So when I went to look for a job, I evaluated my health benefits, my salary, my bonuses, my stock awards, everything that I would get, okay? We hired over a hundred new teachers in this system this year. If allowing, if having that, we can't give bonuses, right, within the system? We don't have stock options to give out, right? So their salary is their salary. So if, if we can use this as a recruiting tool to possibly make someone's life a little bit easier or when someone goes through a divorce or a separation and they have to change counties because of housing or whatever, if it makes their lives a little easier, that they can maintain their employment and where they have been, then I think we are, I understand the numbers, but you have to consider the human element. Because in all honesty, that is what our product is. We are not making widgets. We are making students and, and instilling knowledge. And we have to take care of the people that we have. And if it makes their lives a little bit easier, you know, then, then I, I think we need to, to, to keep that in mind as well.
Okay, and I, okay, go ahead Kathy, and then I have something to say with the making lives easier and that, uh.
Um, you know, we invest a lot of money in our staff through professional development, through, um, through training them. And the longer they're here and the more experience they have under their belt, the more valuable they become. And, um, it, and I, I don't pretend to know every family's situation. I, I certainly, what works for one family doesn't necessarily work for another. But I have to say, I, you know, I certainly agree with Karen that, um, if us making this available for staff means that it, um, it allows them to stay with us and makes their life, whatever their situation is, work better for them, then I, I think that's something that's important for us to do. It supports our staff. Um, I also talked to quite a few people, um, about this topic over the last week. And I explained to them, you know, how many students we had, um, the number that were attending, um, without the county portion, but they were, we were still getting the state portion, so we're still getting money. Um, I mean, there's certainly, uh, there's not a cost to bus them because their transportation is provided both ways by their parents or by some, s- some arrangement their parent has. Um, but as I talked about this and talked about who was able to do this, um, overwhelmingly, what I heard from people was, why wouldn't you do that? Um, they didn't have an issue with it. They were surprised that there would be a conversation about no longer doing it. Um, I, this has been a regulation that has been in effect that predates, um.
I've never known.
Dr. Moderno, yeah, so, I mean, this is, this is a longstanding thing. And, um, and I think it's important. And so, um, I, just to kind of close this out, I support making the change to, um, the proposed non-resident tuition rates for anyone who comes into the system and is eligible to pay tuition as currently stands, um, moving forward from whatever, at whatever time this would be brought forward for an action item. Um, I do not support changing the regulation, um, in the future because I think this is an important benefit for our staff. And I'm not, I, you know, at eight, ten thousandths of a percent, um, y- you're, you're talking, um, less than ninety thousand dollars that we're.
But just to be clear, when it comes back, it's only on the tuition rates, okay?
Right, correct. And so that's what I'm saying is I support the proposed tuition rates. Um, I do not support in the future, um, removing that from the regulation. I think, um, for the period of time that it happens, I, I think it's important.
And I also support the tuition rate, cause just like with food services, with inflation, we have to periodically come in to raise, you know, the price, you know, to, to maintain. And, and that's okay with me, the five hundred dollars. But I'm with Kathy. I adamantly am against having our staff members pay tuition when these people are giving so much to the school system. They have gone years without raises and we finally caught up and they worked and they worked with a smile. And this is an additive incentive we can give them. Other school systems do it. It happens in the corporate world. And it's keeping quality educators here and staff members in St. Mary's County Public Schools. That's why we are an outstanding school system in the state of Maryland because we can re- recruit and retain good people.
Okay, I wanted to talk on, kind of, everybody kind of brought up the point of convenience. And, and yes, we are not producing widgets and, you know, totally agree with all that. And there is a human element to things. But yet this, you know, the staff, okay, and I don't know who staff has their children here. But I will tell you, there is a double standard. Um, one, which I said, you know, with people in the county, if they wanna, you know, have their child there, do we know that, um, maybe as somebody that wanted to switch a school, that now it is overcrowded in, let's say, the fourth grade or fifth grade, whatever, there's a bubble there, that now they're not allowed to change their child? And, um, the other thing too is, you know, in order, you know, cause you're saying that the staff is staying in order to keep them, um, it's not always the same, um, I guess, eh, eh, privilege, eh, put back one to some parents. Um, I will tell you that, and I know lo- I know this person is no longer here, uh, Rochelle Eisenberg from P K Law. But I was told in a meeting that, um, and she has it right here, for my convenience, even though I'd have to go three hours to go pick up my son or if he had a three-hour bus ride, it would be at least a two-hour trip for me, um, that it is, it was explained that when any child gets sick, it is expected that the parent will pick up the child. So even though that I was not lea- allowed to leave my work situation or Greg, his work situation, you know, they left it up to me. I was also told by Judge Duberry, also with Rochelle Eisenberg, that if you were really concerned about your son's education, you would have moved north to Howard or Moncombe County or moved Annapolis closer to Harvard School. So what I'm saying is where we're, we're putting it out there for con- convenience for the teachers, it's not always the same, you know, going either for, uh, a person in the county, like say, maybe it might be more convenient for their son or daughter to be at another school and they might be denied because of, um, it is full. Or to someone else that is, um, have, being forced to have their s- child educated outside the county, definitely not convenient. So there's like all different aspects to this whole regulation that I feel that was really taken, um, liberty on, uh, by, eh, you know, in the past of allowing for convenience, and that's what I'm saying is for convenience, um, to have their child to go to whatever school they choose and for free.
Well, eh, to the point of, of, um, somebody else being denied so that their child can get in. Um, my understanding from what was provided to us and from Dr. Ridgell is, um, if there's not room at the school, then they're, they are denied. And this is a yearly process, so they have to reapply every single year. Um, but also, uh, eh, with respect to choosing which school to go to, um, I mean, yeah, if you're teaching in elementary school and your child goes to middle school, you're gonna have to select a middle school. But since you're the one doing the transportation, presumably you're doing, you're sending your child to the middle school that is closest to the elementary school in which you're teaching. You know, I, I mean.
But that's not always the case. So what I'm saying is.
I, I don't know that we, I don't know that, we don't know that.
Right, so that's what I'm saying. It, we don't know. And we're not, you know, pulling, well, this one's here and this one's there. I'm just saying that how it is written, it gives the liberty to choose a school.
So if, if I might, ultimately, the, the, what was brought forth for action was to consider, to reconsider the rate for an outing, out of county, uh, tuition rate to reflect our actual P P A. And I seem, there seems to be consensus across the table that, so we might be able to bring that back to you for action. On the, the sticking point is whether or not we provide the benefit to staff to have their tuition waived. Um, and wha- and in doing that, the county is agreeing to carry that cost. Uh, I think we could do more homework on our side and that that might be helpful to you to go and take a look at the other counties across the state and where they are with re- with regard to, um, tuition waivers for, for staff. So you can get a more comprehensive picture across the state of Maryland. Because certainly if our teachers, if you reside in Maryland, if you reside in sprit- in, in St. Mary's County and you wanna go to Calvert, you're gonna have to pay thirty-three percent of the state tuition, or the county tuition. If you wanna go to Charles, you're gonna have to s- pay half, fifty percent of the. And so if that is a practice across the state, it's, it's worth, it's worth revisiting. Um, all funding is predicated on the revenue the county receives. And we're gonna be going into the budget cycle, so we're gonna talk a lot about property tax and income tax, and that's what drives our budget. So if you don't live in St. Mary's County, you're not contributing property tax or income tax. And so that is worth a conversation. So I, I'm, I'm more than, not to con- not to abbreviate the conversation, um, but I'm more than, and, and Dr. Ridgell, you know, thank you and obviously now you have some homework. You've done homework regionally. Now we just need it to expand so we can have more of a comprehensive look at it. And then we can bring that back, the regulation.
Well, I think, I think if we do it as a communication update, because, I mean, we, having worked in other places, right, in other counties, we are in a unique situation that we are a very southern tip of, of Maryland, right?
We are peninsula, exactly.
So when you go up to Baltimore County and when you go up, you're gonna have, I'm sure you have teachers that transfer back and forth between the state of Pennsylvania or the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania and the state of Maryland.
Correct, or West Virginia.
Or West Virginia and all of that. So this whole item could grow, could grow into a huge piece of work for Dr. Ridgell. So, um, eh, you know, I mean, there, there are a lot with, with the tax haven that seems to be the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania and not in the state of Maryland.
Yeah.
There are a lot of people that cross the line. So you are going to have, you're gonna see a lot more of that when you get up to the northern end of the state. So I, you know.
Not an appropriate comparison.
Right, so I think a communication update, I don't, you know.
Get you all of this.
And just, and, and make it, make it very simple. I don't think there needs to be hours spent on it. Um, you know, because, you know, we've, not that we've hatched out, but I just, you know, we are, I'm gonna reiterate again, we're talking about fifteen students, right? I mean.
Yeah, but that's, let's say it's ninety thousand, that's another teacher.
Well, I think the consensus of the board at this table is it's something that we don't want to. We have one board member who wants to go down this road to look at getting rid, up to make teachers pay tuition for their children if they live out of county. And I think you have four board members who's saying, no, we don't wanna do that. So do we want to, you know, it's, the superintendent works at the discretion of the board, the majority of the board. That's the way it works. And we don't have consensus here that we wanna go down that road and pursue the staff time that it's gonna take to do this. These four, four board, but you're one board member. That's not how the way the board of education works.
Well, I still would like to. I know, but. So, so one person cannot get, so I cannot ask for the information to bring back to the board so that we can actually make an informed decision.
The board, I think is consensus here.
Have you made an informed, have you?
Yes, I made, I, I'm, I'm good with our teachers, but it exists in its way it is.
In my living room.
So, I mean, do you agree with it? Do you agree with leaving it the way it is that our teach, do you agree with it?
Excuse me, Marilyn, excuse me, why don't you go ahead and talk into this microphone, Marilyn? Excuse me a minute, Marilyn, knock it off. Knock it off.
Oh, I love it. Say it again.
Well, I, 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 can we, can we?
Because Marilyn's carrying on a side conversation over here about her home life.
Okay, well, that, okay, Mary.
It's wonderful, my home life.
Just hold on, Mary has the floor, let her finish.
And that's what I was.
I'm sorry, I missed half of it due to a rude board member.
Being a board member number of years, I know that I don't get everything that I want. And if I can't get the board members to agree with me, then, you know, we move on to other issues. That's the way it goes. It is the consensus of the board, it's the majority of the board. You did bring it forth. Dr. Ridgell did bring you the information that you wanted to explain that no one goes free. We get the state portion and the families pay the county portion. He's bringing forward to raise that to five hundred dollars, which this board seemed like the consensus agree would. We have to keep up with inflation to do that. But to take this from our staff and our teachers, I think, would be a disservice. I really, really do. And with us going probably in negotiations, that's not gonna be well that. The one thing we can give them, we wanna charge them, which will be money out of their salary to pay for tuition when they wanna work for a good s- school system like we have. They want their children to be with them. They feel good. They feel, okay, my child is with me. I don't have to worry about, uh, leaving school, time the bell rings to go to a county to pick my child up from childcare or to make sure my child is safe. My child is with me and I can do more work for the school system, so.
And I understand what you're, uh, I understand what everybody's saying. But I guess I don't understand why something and, and like Karen. and, and like Karen said, we don't need to go in depth, but why something can't be explored? I mean, it's like, why something cannot be explored with, you know, okay, what do other counties do? Is this something that we may want to look at? You know, you, we haven't even explored that, he hasn't had a chance to go back, but you've already decided.
He did bring forth information about what the other counties charge in the tri-county area. I mean, how far do we go, how much time do we spend? I haven't, I guess, nothing new to add to what I've already said, so.
I have a question.
And, you know, I appreciate you bringing it up, you know? But I just don't agree with rate, you know, with our teachers and staff paying tuition for their children.
So really what it'll come down to is, you know, even though that it will move forward, I don't agree.
And that's okay, and that's okay, and that's okay. And if it ever comes up for a vote, you vote no and we move on to the next issue. Because there are more issues coming, because we have to keep moving, this train is moving. We have eighteen thousand students who are dependent on us, we got parents, we got this whole county and the nation depending on us to educate these students to be college and career ready. And we just have to vote, make a decision and move on.
I just, that's double standard, so.
Have a question.
Yes.
Okay, in your request for information, you also asked for the average cost of per student, which we addressed, per global and international studies for the finance academy. What was your reasoning for that?
Because I was, I, oh, yeah, because, well, I do know that with STEM starting out, I know that there was an increased cost. Now, maybe it's averaged out at this point, but that was.
I mean, just the, the, from the business standpoint, you say, you know, there must be a way to calculate the individual student cost. And the, the challenge that we have is that we don't, we don't really keep metrics to that level. It's a, I mean, it's a fairly crude figure. It's how many students does the state recognize, how much money do we have, divide it out. And the state affords us three hundred times the PPA when charging tuition for people outside of the county or outside of the state.
Well, and I mean, you want to take it down to the most granular level. As I said, the, the dollar doesn't follow the child and you put two elementary students together, both of whom are regular ed, okay? Both of whom are regular ed, one of them spends a lot of time in the, with the behavior counselor because they're acting out a lot. It's going to cost more to, to deal with that child, it just all gets averaged in.
All of our teachers cost a different amount, so, you know.
Exactly.
That's why I asked for the average.
Third-year teacher, you know, is this and a, and a twenty-five-year veteran teacher is this, so, you know, that's.
And that's why we can, what, that's why we just go by the per pupil calculation.
Right, and that's why I asked for average.
Yeah, so that is the average, really.
So direction to the superintendent, we will bring back this board policy for action.
No, we're going to bring, we're going to bring back the tuition item.
Yes, just this.
For action, which is not policy.
I'm sorry, just.
Tuition proposal.
Right.
Right.
Okay.
But see, and the reason it brought up, it wasn't just the tuition increase, it was also had in there about the fifteen students. That's why the rest of the conversation came up, because it wasn't just with the.
Absolutely.
Understand.
And my, my interest is now peaked and I, I, I will be working with staff to understand throughout the state how other, how other LEAs, you know, approach this. Because this isn't, because this isn't something that I have revisited.
Right, it's just, you know, as Karen pointed out, I mean, our unique geographic position is so much different than somebody who lives out in even Garrett County or Allegheny County because they can go to Pennsylvania, they can go to West Virginia, either to live and then work here or, or live here and work there, so.
Even Montgomery County, I mean.
Yeah, go across the bridge.
Right, so I mean, it, I, I seriously do not know if hours and hours should be spent on.
Oh, no, no.
You know, it's, will you go to Pizzam, have a conversation with other superintendents to say?
It's as simple as a general, yes, a general query, we, we do that, we do that as a routine, right function.
All right, I don't want any big formal presentation and all this, okay. Well, just me personally, I don't know what anyone else wants.
No, and that's what I meant, I just wanted to have an idea what other, you know, if other counties are charging then.
There are so many things that we do and, and that we have always done and that, that's what makes us, that's what makes us who we are. That's what makes us, what's great, that's what makes us a destination and it could be because you can't go any further. But, you know, we are, we, you know.
You could swim to Virginia.
You read my mind.
Come here and stay, stay with us, stay with us.
And, and to that point, I mean, it is good to revisit what we've done and always done.
And also to reinforce that these are the things that we do for you because we care and, and want you to.
An unseen or unheralded benefit.
These are all things that make us who we are. Thank you, Dr. Rigel, you are so good, you have stood up there for.
For a pillar.
Yes, he is, he is one of our pillars.
Okay, anything else?
Nope.
All right, I'm going to bang the gavel, are we go?
All right.